Good evening, and I would like to reconvene the Putnam Valley Board of Education Work Session Business Meeting that began with an executive session at 6:30. But for all of us, welcome back, Happy New Year, and please stand and join me as we salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, my first order of business would be to have a resolution to amend our agenda. I would like to resolve to remove Agenda Item Number Six from New Business Action Items. This will be tabled and added onto a future board meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I would like a resolution to approve the minutes of the business meeting of December 10th, 2020, and the special business meeting of December 21st, 2020.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And I am happy that everything we'll be doing now will say 2021. And let's start with our first presentation, Dr. Luff.
Sure. At this time, I'd like to welcome Tom Sawyer, the chairperson of our Audit Committee, to the microphone to provide us some recommendations for a recent risk assessment audit. Thank you.
Is it on?
All right, thank you. Good evening. The Audit Committee had the pleasure of meeting virtually on December 17th to review the draft risk assessment update and recommended audit plan for the fiscal year 2020, 2021 from Acum Partners. We have a nice little summary deck. I believe everybody on the board has the full report. We'll just go through the deck real quick. So the risk assessment update process, this is when the internal auditors come in and review the control measures in place that we have currently, the different areas for potential risk review and audit, and then determine what they want to focus on for the next audit cycle. So they interview staff, they determine any significant changes to the environment, they analyze the current risk factors, a number of things come into play for that when the last time a audit was conducted for a particular area, if there's been any changes in any of the areas that are being focused on. And for this particular area that they're going to focus on in the upcoming audit cycle, that is the government aid and grant. In the fiscal year 1920, that was a low risk. For fiscal year 2020, 2021, it has increased to a medium risk. That is not due on any part to functions of the school itself. New York State has put in new control measures, requesting new control measures and specific focus in this area for government aid and grants. So Acum Partners decided that would be the best area to focus on for the next risk assessment cycle. So that is the recommendation from our internal auditors that we focus on the government aids and grants in the upcoming review cycle. Any questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. We are now about to begin our budget presentation cycle for this year. Dr. Luff, do you want to introduce?
I would love to. So right now, I'd like to welcome Mr. Michael Lee to the mic, and he's going to provide our budget presentation for the Technology Department.
Michael, set the bar high, and everybody have to follow you.
I like his first slide. We've heard the pop-up.
All right. Now, does this get to the...
Right.
There it is.
It's good incorporation of the mask.
Set the bar.
All right. So let's see, how close do I need to get to this thing? Okay. All right. So I'm Mike Lee. It's good to see everyone. Happy New Year. This is the Technology Budget Presentation. It's been quite a year, hasn't it? A year ago, we had no idea what was going to happen. Think about that. One year ago, I gave this presentation January 9th. We had no clue. Let's start out with a quote, "The best preparation for tomorrow is doing your best today." And I think that speaks to something that's very central to how the tech department has been and will continue to operate in the future. In the past, we focused a lot on upgrading hardware, upgrading software, networks, so on and so forth. But this year, well, 2020 and this year, had forced us to upgrade something else. What did we have to upgrade? What's the last thing to upgrade? We had to all upgrade ourselves a little bit. And so in 2020, kind of with COVID being at the center of everything, we conducted the largest training effort that our tech department has done, so human upgrade, that we've ever had before. We had to reach everybody. We're talking about students, parents, teachers, office staff, aides, and they all required a little something different, preparing for remote learning. Those sessions, we taught the teachers how to take their laptops, view their students on the screens, connect to their smart boards or interactive displays, and then share their smart board contents with the students at home, and also be able to write on the boards and all that stuff. For the parent sessions, we showed them all around Google Classroom. We showed them what a meet would look like, showed them around Power School, and even showed them how to update their contact info in Power School. We continue to offer Superintendent Conference Day tech support sessions and drop in virtual live sessions on best practices in remote learning and really, you know, any topic that anyone wants to bring up or ask questions on. Now, remember this from last year's presentation? I said classrooms everywhere are more connected. The system is the network, right? The system is the network. We're no longer connecting to things inside of our district for everything we need. Everything we do is out there in the cloud, right? We're all connecting to all things Google. We're sending things out, we're bringing things in. And so we had just completed upgrading the infrastructure to meet future connectivity needs. Now, who knew that the future was going to be 2020? Let's take a look at some use comparisons, pre-COVID, right? And then the COVID era. Look at, and I don't have to read through all the stats, you could see it. Every one of these metrics are not just a little bit higher, but orders of magnitude higher. Now, I know what you might be thinking. You might be thinking, well, you know, COVID, does that mean that these stats are from March all the way till now? Well, no. These stats, the measurement period's the same. The COVID column, that's just this school here. So the measurement periods are actually the same. And look how much more use, you know, we're using, how much more we're using these Google We had a year of firsts. This is the first time that we've actually deployed all of our devices, K-12. As we know, we typically would send home the middle school devices and the high school devices, but not really elementary. Now, we've got them all out. We're helping the community by providing internet access to families in need through Altice, which is also Optimum Online. And now, Google Meet, I gave it its own little section here. So last year, we would use maybe Meet on and off. You know, it wasn't that essential last year, but now, it's kind of the way things are, right? Daily, we've got an average of 1,100 users. The number of meets hosted, over 43,000. We've collectively spent 3.8 years in meets with the average meet being about 45.8 minutes long. Now, think about this. With all this use, right, all these meets, that's got to generate a lot of traffic, right? Yeah, certainly does. Before COVID, our traffic was, and this is like constant, steady traffic, about 270 megabits per second. But now, when the kids are in, and you know, we're doing all the Google meets and everything, it's around a steady 685 megabits per second. That's a lot more traffic. And that sort of points back to the infrastructure upgrades that we did, you know, to prepare for something like this. Now, as a tech department, this year was sort of like an opportunity to grow as a The situation sort of forced us to find efficiencies, find ways to react quicker, find ways to plan better. And one thing that we did was created QR codes everywhere. QR codes offer a way to integrate Google Forms really, really quickly and efficiently. One example is the cleaning logs that we have in all the schools, in all the cleaning locations. Something else we did was we built a custom COVID dashboard. Thanks to Dan, it's working really well. It's working, I think, better than a lot of the solutions that you could buy. And at minimum, those solutions are like $5,000. So we saved a lot of money there. We streamlined, and we actually had to create rapid laptop and Chromebook deployment and retrieval capability at the elementary school. Because as we know, we didn't even have a process there because we never sent anything out. Now, for the high school and middle school, we had to develop a rapid turnaround to process those in the summertime, then rapidly get them out again. And we're even developing our own in-house operations capability, you know, for fire systems, security access control, so we could reduce our dependence on outside companies. Now, some infrastructure highlights, working closely with Dave's operations team. For the high school, we're in the process of replacing the fire alarm system. And in the middle school, well, we've got all that new renovation work to complete. And then in the wellness center, you know, well, I mean, it's a new space, right? So we've got to put all of these items in. So staffing for next year is pretty much the same as this year, but we have one new team member. We welcome Ed Nowicki, who's a PV alum. He's our new Bosie's Junior Computer Support Specialist. And as you can see, we, you know, just our small team, we support all of these items. And now, in addition to this, just the hardware support, we're also directly supporting, like, parents at home. When they have an issue, they call in or they email in, and we, you know, we help them In terms of our expenses, categorically, they're pretty much the same as last year and the year before. These are all required services or maintenance items. We did spend more in curriculum software to support remote learning, however. Now, this is where I usually share our laptop and Chromebook allocation. This year, because of the way kind of the world is, it's a little early to try to guess what might be needed in that regard. So the allocation should be determined. But of course, we've got some equipment and supplies for the new construction and renovation that we like to purchase. And of course, we like to take advantage of Bosie's IPA process, and that number is the same as last year. So looking forward, what do we have to complete? Well, we've got the MS renovation, ES auditorium AV system, and the wellness center. And some things to plan for looking forward, 2023, 2024 school year, we need to look at getting new, this is called ES XI hosts, those are new, basically servers for our virtual machines and virtual servers, and new storage for those. And again, we'd like to purchase those, the Bosie's IPA, so there's no budget-to-budget And that's it.
Thank you very much. Questions on the board?
Michael, I want to thank you specifically and your team for taking on the charge of what needed to be done for last year and this year and moving forward. I remember all this talk probably three years ago now, I can't even remember, it might be four, about the assessments, the New York State assessments that were supposedly going online assessments, which somehow hasn't come to fruition yet for real. But it did create the Smart Schools bond, which definitely was a help to building our infrastructure. Without that, we could have been behind the eight ball as far as being able to roll out what we rolled out. So I want to thank you for executing that and maintaining that and ushering that through as well.
Well, thanks.
Yeah, I just want to add to that. You've made me a little nervous, Mike, because now I don't know what this year could bring. I'm thinking we're going to have, last January, we were blissfully ignorant, sitting in our library seats close on top of each other, and I'm afraid what next year can bring. But your staff have proved your self-ability to jump to whatever it is. I mean, remote learning can only work if you have a strong tech department. So thank you very, very much.
Oh, thanks. Thank you.
Mike, how's the access from kids at home? Like, are we having, because I keep, you know, I hear on Facebook and other people I talk to say, like, you know, oh, we're out of, there's no internet again today. Like, is that a significant problem for students or teachers or not?
No, I haven't heard that it's a significant problem. I mean, we do hear occasionally when things like that happen, and we do contact them directly to try to solve their home internet issues. I know Laura has called families and tried to diagnose their, like, cable modem with them. And also, families who do not have or did not have any internet at all. If they contacted us, we provide that for them.
That's good.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, that's good to know.
Yeah.
I just jotted down a few words as you were presenting. And I know we've already recognized Mike and his department, but I think, again, just this presentation speaks to the work that they've already accomplished this year. So some of the words I wrote down were foresight, flexibility, innovation, dedication, and expertise. And I'll explain. So the foresight of Mike and his department to purchase equipment that the district had never used before, preemptively expanding our bandwidth in anticipation of its need. From the presentation today, we saw how important that was. Developing and testing new programs, some that we had never used, others that never existed and were built from scratch by our own staff. And partnering with companies like Optimum to provide all students with access. Flexibility, including the rapid collection, updating, and deployment of equipment. Innovation, finding new and creative ways to solve new problems. Dedication, doing whatever is needed whenever the need arises. And expertise, training teachers, students, and parents. Just I can't underscore how vital the technology department has been to this district this year. And all the conversations I have with Mike, I'm like, hey, Mike, we really need to figure out how to get kids at home internet service. He's got an answer. Now, Mike, I know it normally takes us all summer to collect laptops, image them, and get them out, but we need to get it done in like two weeks. He figured out how to get it done in like two weeks. We need a way to collect student screening information, and every district that's purchased a program hates it. Well, I'll work with Dan, and he'll build one. Oh, by the way, all these new programs and stuff that you purchased, we need to teach the teachers how to use them. And then when you're done teaching the teachers, you need to teach the parents at home because they're also working as teachers. And he said, okay, we could do that. So I think, again, it just speaks to the dedication of Mike and his team, and I know Matt's here and Dan's obviously here. And I know, again, we've recognized you, but again, I can't say enough how proud and appreciative I am of you guys. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, you want to mention the names of your team? Just so that we have them here?
Sure, yeah. We've got Matt Brady. Yay. We've got Dan Mahoney, Ed Nowicki, Doug Green, Laura Sherwood, and Alex Goffman.
Nice. Nice. Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
So now, I'd like to welcome Dave Spittle, our Facilities Director, to give our Facilities Operations Transportation Budget Presentation. Thank you.
You've had nothing going on, right, Dave? It's kind of slow.
No, it's going to be light. It's about 30 seconds long. But while Matt's helping me, I do want to piggyback on what you all said and Dr. Luff, this tech team has been wonderful for me to work with and collaborate with and has helped me a great deal. And you'll see that in my presentation as well.
Is Alex an alumni? Everybody else is, right? And Laura's a parent and alumni. That's funny.
Great.
Sorry, Dave. Didn't know you were ready.
Okay, no. Someone's calling me while I'm up here. So to start with, instead of embedding these videos into my presentation, I think they play better, these are just going to be the time-lapse videos that we've created here. We have this, the Wellness Center. So this one, Matt, we have two of these, right?
Dave, I see a puddle.
What's that?
I see a puddle in the grass there.
Yeah, it's, the water's just there.
The puddle's still there, two years later.
Yeah. It's bigger and smaller.
About how fast it happened?
It just, it really felt this fast.
Oh, you cover the water hole.
We tried to hide in the dirt.
You're doing it right there.
So this is going to be March through October, right? And then we tried to do one all the way through, it didn't work today. So then I'm going to do in October through the present. And I really wanted the finish of it to have the windows in. I was up there myself trying to get the windows in today, but we will have it done tomorrow, a day late.
Are those windows that we see in there now not the real windows? Are they just like spacers or something?
No, those are the real windows.
Okay.
Yeah, the two ends aren't in yet. A little trouble with those this morning.
Pouring somewhere there.
Yeah.
Waiting for things.
Waiting for the, actually...
Waiting for the frame, right?
Yeah.
Oh, is this what, we're having the summer now?
Yeah, we're waiting for the building to be delivered.
I didn't see the date on bottom.
All of a sudden.
Maybe an inch and a half adjust.
Yep, one and a half inches. Then the steel got there.
Here we go. It's like a giant Lego, or a Richter set. The grass growing through being parked in there.
Grass finds a way.
Unless you want it to grow.
Right.
And then it refuses.
Yeah, there's a leaf changing in the back. That's cool. Okay, so that's, that's through October.
David Copperfield has nothing on us.
And Matt, can you help me find the other one? Like I said, collaborating with the tech team. A godsend.
There it is, part two.
Oh, there it is. Is this it?
Yep.
Over first.
It goes a little bit faster because we did... And that's what it looks like this morning.
Nice.
Still the water bottle, or over here.
Now, here's the middle school. You know, a lot of the work is done on the inside, but I don't know if anybody's seen it during the day, but it's really been transformed from a really ugly building into a pretty cool-looking building. Still have some finishing touches to do on the outside, caps for the stonework on the pillars underneath the canopy out front.
I forget these exist, you forget what it worked on.
Right behind us, though, there's solar panels.
What's that, Joe?
Right behind us in this picture are the proposed solar panels from...
Yeah, yeah. You guys really need to see for yourselves what that's going to look like. Keep imagining it as I'm walking it on the trail. It's hard to really see the windows, what a big impact they're going to make on this, but visually, I thought that the windows from the exterior made a tremendous difference on how the school, and that along with the painting of that coping along the top from that brown color to the new gray color, I think...
I think the biggest impact of the windows, Dave, are from the gym. When you're in the gym.
Yeah. Dave, you know, remind me, this well is no longer active, right?
The what?
This well?
Uh, right, we decommissioned that well. Yeah, it felt that way this year, right? Yeah, you know, we're almost done, but... It looks a lot, looks like a, oh, jeez, it snowed.
It's not again.
There you have it. Okay, so that's the construction. Whoops, didn't mean to do that.
And Dave, you say...
I'm not used to using this mouse.
You say ugly with the energy of somebody who actually attended it as a student.
Yes. We referred to it as the prison back then. But yeah, I think it's really, it's something, I mean, obviously hats off to the architects and that, but...
I like in the middle school one, you can tell the day that school closed because the size of that staging area doubled.
Right.
Like, okay.
From just this little tiny pen.
They're like, you're not reopening?
Thank goodness.
Yeah. Okay, so my presentation tonight is broken into three parts, the capital projects, this is basically a lot of pictures, and you guys can ask questions after each one of these sections. Then, maintenance, health, and safety, and transportation. And so, capital projects, we have the elementary school makerspace and auditorium, the middle school and the wellness center that you just saw, and then a slide or two on what we're going to do next. The elementary school, this makerspace came out beautifully. I see it being used by Liz Broas there to teach virtually. I see her all the time because I had to keep checking on this thing being finished, and it is done. it is done, and it looks great, and I can't wait to see our little kiddos in there having fun with all this stuff. The auditorium, this is the, as you can see, the, the old stairs were refinished, recarpeted. The biggest improvement here, I think, is in the, the lighting. This is always a dark area up in there, especially in the back, and now it's, it's, it's a lot brighter with those spaceship UFO looking lights on the top there. The stage, it's hard to, to get, to capture this in a picture, but the stage looks beautiful. It's refinished. We have storage for musical equipment that's, that have been installed and new AV stuff that's hard to show. Acoustical aspects, you can see on the ceiling here, there's acoustical tiles that will help with the acoustics in the auditorium. And of course, you can see in this picture, the lighting, you know, we, we upgraded the lighting, so the whole thing is, is really a much brighter and, and updated space, and the sound should be better. And what you don't see in this picture is we have new chairs, too. So they're, they're going to be a lot more comfortable and nice chairs to replace the 1935 chairs.
And where are they storing them, Dave?
Uh, right now, they're, they're where the old ones were in the hallway, but they store much easier, much, much more safely stored. They, they stack really nice on some wheels and you just bring them in. Yeah, it's, it's...
Dave, do we have, I'm sorry, did I interrupt you?
No, not at all.
Do we have air conditioning in the old gym, in the auditorium?
Yes, that's also been installed, which my pictures don't show, but that was a big part of the renovation over there, was to get the air conditioning in, and it's, it's been commissioned and, and we haven't had to try it yet because it's, it's cold.
And the technology, there's a screen that comes down over the stage, like...
Uh, there's no new screen. The technology is really, we ran conduit and were able to connect that, that little press box or whatever you call it in the back of, of the auditorium, connect from there to the stage and then across the stage. And that, that part is not finished. It's the only part of the project that isn't finished.
Okay.
Our tech team's been a little busy.
Well, as Mike had mentioned, that's part of our upcoming work.
Yeah.
We've commissioned an AV specialist technician who's coming in. He's designed a new program. We've purchased a lot of equipment, so we're going to be able to really provide, make that a much more cutting edge auditorium than it had ever been. And the work during, done during the project to make a raceway or conduit from the back to the front goes a long way in helping make that all a reality.
Okay.
And yeah, so God willing, we will have our kiddos up there on stage, and I can't wait to see that, the new auditorium. So, Middle School, I took a few pictures here. You've seen a lot of this. You just saw some in the video, but this is, looks real nice from the front here now. I moved that little Japanese maple tree from the back over there. I thought that it needed it, so that wasn't purchased. Where that was going to go. So windows before, this is from the inside, looking out, weren't they lovely? This is how a lot of the windows in the school looked from the inside. This is what they look like now. They're clear. You can see the oak, oak sills on the inside. So not only with the upgrade in energy efficiency visually, but aesthetically, you know, they, they look nice from the inside and out. So, I thought the windows were a huge, huge important impact on the school. Bathrooms before...
Dave, have all the windows been installed?
Are they what?
Have all the windows been installed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
This project is done except for punch list items. We have a, a few to go, which I was standing over the guy replacing a few floor tiles this morning and a few little odds and ends in there, but it's done. And of course, the, the tech work, the, you know, the, the door swipes and, and cameras and, and things aren't quite done. We had a little data issues in there. So...
Dave, can you go back one slide?
Back?
Yeah. I'm pretty sure there's a note on this slide that says, "Never show in public."
You told me that, right?
I think I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure I did.
You did. But, actually, I'm not going to, this is a picture of a bathroom that exists right now. But that's what they all looked like prior to the renovation, and this is what they look like now. Okay, so they're really, really needed to be done, and they look great, clean. This is the interior. The stage was redone. This, this whole area was redone. The only thing I don't like about this is that we can't really show it how it's intended to be with all the furniture in place that has this cool social commons and, you know, because we're set up for COVID, which is, which is tough. But, but this is, as good as I could do this picture here, I think, to show you how cool that space is and, for the, for the students. But it'll be even cooler with, with all the furniture that we're going to put in that are intended for kids to be able to sit next to each other and socialize. This is the Room 151, the Makerspace. It's right in the front of the school there. This came out beautiful, beautiful design on this, and the, the teacher in there loves it. It's really, you use it as a special ed classroom right now, but, but it has a capability, if it's a Makerspace, whatever, it's, it's just a great, modern room. This is the Learning Commons, and again, this is not set up as nicely as we're going to have it set up because you see the tape on the floor even where we put desks for our kids to eat their lunch. We had to expand the lunch into this area to accommodate the, the almost 60 students that eat lunch at a time, and they can't fit socially distance in that other space, so we, we stretched them out into here. So this Learning Commons is not, it's done except for the furniture, how we envisioned it, but it's going to really, it'll look really cool. It does already. This, I don't know if anybody's seen this yet except for Dr. Lofte. This is the, the gymnasium. That old wood paneling is down, and we put these panels up with the logo and all, replaced all the grates. This was, it, it's, it's, it looks great, I think. Next, this summer, I, we intend to refinish the floor to really finish this thing off.
We're also seeking volunteers to paint yellow rafters, if you know anyone.
He's obsessed with these yellow rafters. They don't bother me that much.
You're just tall, Jeremy.
This is the picture I took this morning of the inside of the Health and Wellness Center. The lights were just, we flipped a switch on those lights that were hung just today. You can see the big fans. It's a very cool space. The progress on this interior, it, it's almost done, as you can see. We, we have to just do some painting, the windows at the end, and then on Tuesday, they're going to come in and start putting the turf down. And that's going to take about two weeks, so we will, in, in, in three, in three weeks, we'll be able to kick some soccer balls around in there. It's going to be great. Be open in about a month. We have to get the fire alarm and stuff working, but it's, it's homestretch, and it's, it's been a daily struggle, believe it or not, for a building that's a kit building, kind of. It's, it's, it's been difficult, especially with the COVID and the supply chain difficulties and all, and, and our, our general contractor broke his ankle and is missing. He hasn't been around in a month. Our, our construction manager was on quarantine for two weeks. I know we're all dealing with these kind of things, but this is a lot of setbacks, but we're at the homestretch, so I'm excited. Looking great. So what's next? Dr. Lofte and I are meeting with KGND, the architects, tomorrow morning to discuss the renovation of the bathrooms and the internal part of the middle school, the academic area of the middle school, the, the middle part of that, that was on the original project, but budgetary constraints made us scratch that alternative for now, that alternate for now. We feel like we, we have to obviously work on the budget and see what's left over after change orders, but we're going to get something done, we think, this next summer as a Phase Two, but we'll know more after we meet with the architects tomorrow and look at their budgets and, and what they've designed. So that's what's next. Also, I've been working with KGND on a five-year capital plan. This is something that's required for us to do every five years, and they are really here to assess infrastructure needs and to see, forecast what our big capital expenses are going to be in, in, in the out years. My concerns are for big expenses are the roof for this 20-year-old building we're sitting in right now, especially, I talked to the roofer who came to inspect, and, and we did do some work before we put the solar panels down to try to extend the life of that roof, the flat roofs where we put the solar on, but the, all the curved roofs, the mountains that they, here, they're going to need replacement soon. So that's an expense that's coming by soon, sometime in the next five years. The parking lot is another concern, and as an, as a, as a big expense that we're going to have to incur sometime, it's kind of been undermined by the, 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 the water that constantly runs underneath this campus from, from up on Foothill Street, and it's going to need to be worked on at one point. And the elementary school domestic water, you know, that well is, we, we, we're going to have to do some work on that is, is a concern. But they're looking at it, and they have their engineers assessing it and working with their engineers and, and their different specialists from KGND to, to really try to get a, a good grip on, on what our capital outlays are going to need to be for the basic bones and, and infrastructure of our facilities. So I will inform you as that gets revealed. Other facility improvement ideas, because I am relentless, I can't stop thinking about how improve, how to improve this place. Upper elementary school field expansion, baseball, softball, dugouts need new, need roofs. They don't have any, so they don't really do much good to protect from the sun or the rain. The high school turf area, the fencing is, is kind of deteriorating, and it's 20 years old, so it's going to need to be upgraded, nets and fencing down there, if you look closely at those. We're trying to work on seeing if our groundskeepers, custodians can do the fencing work themselves over time, but we're working on that. We got a little distracted with a few other things. The high school courtyard redesign, this is just in my head, and I think that we could design it where students would use it more outside with very little cost, but I'm just thinking about that. Electric cars and charging stations, I think that's going to be a need in the future. Additional solar arrays, elementary school walking trail. They're just some ideas, but I have, I have a, a lot of them. So any questions on the capital project before we move on?
Dave, I have a question on, I'm looking at the photo of the Wellness Center, and just so I know, we're, this picture is us looking towards the high school, correct? High school gym is right outside that window?
That's, the high school academic area is, is that, right, yeah.
So the, the street is on the left-hand side where the windows are?
That's correct.
The, if the turf is going, when the turf goes in, how does maintenance happen on the above structure, those fans, the lights, et cetera?
Uh, we, we bought a lift in anticipation of the needs for all this high work. We could also use the lift that we're buying for, in here. Sometimes we have to do, do work up above here, and we have to rent, we have to rent a lift to do that because we don't have one that, that reaches. So we, we bought a lift that, that is going to be delivered in about two weeks.
And that's safe for that surface?
Um...
To be used on the, the...
Well, we're going to, we're going to have to have several sheets of plywood because talking to the turf folks, they, they really don't want those heavy lifts on the, on the turf, which is another reason why the turf's not in yet, because we, we keep delaying it to get all these other big lifts just out of there, and all the high work is basically done now, except for those windows, and then the lifts come out, and that's where we're going to start building the turf next week. But ongoing for the walk draw netting that we're going to put in later and the net that drops down, we're going to have to put, you know, specific three-quarter inch plywood, you know, four sheets of it and put, keep putting it in front, you know, that's what we have to do.
Right.
Yep. Sorry, Jessica, come up to the mic.
Assuming there is going to be a spring season, which I know is kind of on the fence right now and looking towards snow, but if there were to be, do you think that would be usable? Because I was just thinking for the MAGMA program and a couple of other programs for the younger kids, that would be very useful to have access to the Wellness Center.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, great.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I'm excited to, to have the MAGMA program in there, and I think it will be, you know, I, I wouldn't be conservative and say about six weeks we'll be able to use it, okay? But I, I think it'll be sooner than that. Now, another category here that we're going to talk about is maintenance with, and health and safety. As you can imagine this year, health and safety ended up being a huge part, a huge focus of what, of what my team works on. And so the challenges we've had are that we've added 18,000 additional square feet, 14,000 square foot Wellness Center, and 4,000 square feet of additional space in the middle school. This is about how much a custodian cleans, can clean on a, on a daily basis. And so we have that additional square feet to maintain, square footage to maintain, and obviously we've had significant additional COVID-19 protocols to, to deal with this year. And the, and of course, there are budgetary constraints. So, you know, how to do this with, without increasing staffing, how to increase, how to, how to deal with these, these new protocols of cleaning and, and COVID protocols and the, any additional space without adding personnel, which is the challenge. So, you know, here's my toolbox on, on, on how we, how we do that. We utilize the skill sets of our existing staff. We internalize work. That means we, we try to bring work in that we give to, give, use to give out to, to other contractors, try to do them ourselves. We supply the, the tools that they need. We include the staff in the, and develop the culture of innovation and sustainability, and a lot of these innovative ideas are not mine, but my staff is, is very comfortable in coming to me and with ideas, and it's okay if, if I don't implement them, but some of them I do, and they, and they're, they're fantastic. So I'm going to show you a few examples. We also use technology, and I'll show you some examples of that and working, collaborating with, with Mike and his team to improve our productivity with, with technology. And then in-sourcing, which is, I have an example of that. So one technology, electrostatic sprayers. You've seen this before. We, this allows us to, to disinfect a bathroom in, in about a minute where it used to take about 10. And we, we do this during the day and every night, and we use the, this equipment, which, which we've talked about before, to really make, to disperse the disinfectant and make sure that, that we kill the COVID. So this is a, a cool thing that we've, we've just implemented. This is an onsite disinfectant generator. What, what we've discovered, along with other PPE and other things, that disinfectants, because everybody's trying to disinfect everything... because everybody's trying to disinfect everything all the time now, they've become increasingly scarce, and, and there's a, a product, this Quot, that, that is, is in virtually all the COVID killer cleaners, that has become scarce. So what happens then is, is the, the products that disinfect become more expensive and harder to get. And the last thing we want to do these days is to run out of disinfectant. So we're going to make our own, and we are making our own as we speak. And we, we use salt and water and electricity to, to make, this is what, this is what the thing looks like. We, we put a, you know, salt in there, in the, in this container to the left, and we add water and electricity, and these two containers you see here, on the left, it fills a container full of a CDC-approved disinfectant that is called hyperchloric acid. It's similar technology to a, a saltwater pool, instead of chlorine, they use a salt, and that, that cleans it. It's, it's, the other thing it produces is a degreaser cleaner, it produces about one gallon of cleaner for every two gallons of this hypochloric acid. Both of these products, you could actually drink the hypochloric acid, it just tastes like saltwater. It's so environmentally friendly and safe. Another concern I had was these disinfectants that the, our cleaners and our custodial staff are, are spraying around all the time. I didn't want them to be breathing it in all the time, and didn't want any, any concerns associated with that, so really excited, these guys, they, they can use this without, there's just no one around, without wearing a mask, without PPE. It, it'll go, the, 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 the end product, this hypochloric, chloric acid, will go in all of those, those spray guns and, and the electrostatic sprayers, and, and, and we could use it everywhere. This will eliminate about 90% of our purchasing needs for cleaners. It'll save us thousands of dollars every year and be environmentally friendly and safe.
Let's just do a quick PSA, don't drink the hydrochloric.
Don't. I said you could, I don't recommend it. Thanks.
You want to be clear?
Yeah, I, I got it.
You could also eat a crayon, but you shouldn't.
Right, similar. Play-Doh, right? So QR codes, Michael mentioned this in his presentation, really helpful, working, this is the use of technology to make us more productive. Cleaning logs were required by the state to tell us, so we can, we can document exactly when every room in the building is cleaned. This is going to be taking more of our time, obviously. Now, what happens is these guys just hit this QR code with their phone or, or a tablet that's on their, their cart, it instantly goes to, to a form that they just hit, that it was cleaned, it was disinfected, it creates the log, who cleaned it, who disinfected it, when it happened. So this, this satisfied a, a state requirement, and, and doesn't add any time to, to our, our cleaners' day, hardly any time. So other, this is an in-sourcing thing. When I got here, the HVAC expense in the district was exploding, our, every piece of equipment in the high school, middle school was about 20 years old, and we're failing, hundreds of thousands of dollars were being spent on this. And it was, it was one of the first things that I looked at to tackle as, as a large expense and an unpredictable expense for the district that I wanted to rein in and get a handle on. And we, it took us, after analyzing the problem and the potential solutions, it took us about a year to get this done, but we, we brought in a HVAC technician and master plumber in-house, and so we're going to eliminate a, a huge part of that HVAC expense. We should be able to reduce it significantly, and we can document that over time, but I looked at it today, and, and it's looking really good where, where we're at, as far as compared to where, where we used to be. And it's going to be a big savings annually for the district. So this is, besides that HVAC, master plumber, these are, that can't really count as part of my staffing because, long story, but there, but he's here, and we actually, it's, it's a, it's a company that we, we, a single-person company that we, we hired. But this is the actual staff hired by the district here, as you can see, and it's, it's, it's not changing at all, even, even with all those challenges, we're going to have zero increase. And I updated the square footage to 290,000 square feet on 72 acres, still the same bit of land. So any questions on the maintenance, health, and safety?
So Dave, with the addition of the Wellness Center, you do not expect to increase any staff?
Uh, no. We're, there's a lot, there's some shifting to do, and I'm, I've already done that in anticipation, so, but we, I believe we're going to be able to, to pull it off, we're So here's the, the budget summary for, for Operations Department here. No change in, in the personnel, as I just mentioned. Maintenance supplies will decrease, heating oil will decrease, this is a result of the EPC finally being implemented fully. The electric costs will decrease for the same reason. Propane costs are going to increase based on the Wellness Center, that's what heats, heats and cools the Wellness Center, is propane, that just got hooked up yesterday, so it's going to increase a bit. Our HVAC, we're going to increase the cost with that in-house HVAC plumber, but our overall costs are going to decrease substantially. And our plumbing costs are going to go away. We spend about $25,000 to $30,000 on plumbing every year, and that's going to go hopefully to zero. So the last bit is transportation. Obviously, challenges are with COVID protocols, driver quarantines that happen quite often, daily schedule changes as schools that we deliver our students to open and close on a daily basis. Students, some come in, some don't, everything changes every day. And of course, we've also been doing lunch deliveries still, we've been doing that when, when our, our students aren't here, we're using our transportation staff to do the deliveries of the lunches to students at home. I'm proud to say that, that this year has been the, the, I'm going to knock on some wood here, the smoothest year in transportation, it's really been, you know, basically seamless, no accidents, no trouble, no missed bus stops, no, there's nothing, it's no service failures, and that's, that's a big improvement, and, you know, from years past, as you guys know. And, you know, our staff has done a wonderful job down there, and we've held the, the contract company accountable for their service, and we've implemented some other, we, we hired a, a part-time person, a couple hours a day down there, that's really helped to make sure that, that the bus drivers are all there and acts as a dispatcher and is there to handle phone calls and all when, when Michael or Lori have to go out on the road. So transportation has been a big relief, because as you can see, I have a lot of other stuff going on, and it basically, I don't, I don't, I don't need to get involved every day there, which is great. So this, this is the staffing, we're going to have two bus drivers retire this year that we're going to put out ads for in, in a few weeks here. And that's the transportation vendor. Obviously, they've done a wonderful job this year, and the budget, don't see any change in in-house staffing. Fuel is just based on, on, on what the fuel prices are, and we're probably going to need to buy a, a large bus, but that's not, I don't know where that, Jill's going to tell me how we can do that. But, and then the, the risk here is that we have a transportation vendor contract that is expiring at the end of this year, so we're, we're hoping that it's going to be just to keep them on and get a CPI increase, but we'll see. And any questions about anything, not just transportation?
What do we need the new bus for? What would we use a large bus for? We, we have one and we're replacing it because it's old, or?
Um, we're, we're, for sports runs and, and things, we need, we only have a, a couple buses now, and they, they are old, but Michael has, he needs that flexibility to be able to not have to lean on, on the, the out, the contractor for surprise stuff that happens.
So our, our drivers do sports runs, a lot of them?
On Saturdays now.
Okay.
Uh, they do, they don't do the after-school ones, or, or a contractor does that.
Okay.
Dave, the, just for further clarification, the Wellness Center, you say is being heated by propane, is our current geothermal not robust enough to be able to handle that, I assume?
Yeah, yeah, we, believe me, we tried. We, we, we looked at it closely, they, they were not comfortable that our capacity of our geothermal loops that exist would, would be able to heat that or, or cool it. And believe me, I wanted to, I looked, we looked at trying to expand the fields or anything, and there's not room, it was going to be too costly. You know, the only, you know, yeah, we did, we did make sure that the roof was designed in a way that can hold solar panels, so that's an option for down, down the road, not that it's going to heat or cool it, but that, that is another opportunity for solar, a solar array there, and the roof can handle it, but it is propane. It's not oil, so we got that going for us.
Dave, do you want to speak a little about the Pudding Street overpass?
Do I, yeah. Um, yeah, that's really exciting, because I live in Roaring Brook, and reduced my commute from 25 minutes to 12. Now that that's, that's done, working on it for 22 years, and it's, it's finally passable, we can go over it. Now, we've, we did a communication out to the, the families in Roaring Brook that will allow a 10-minute shorter bus ride, or 12 minutes or something shorter, so that they're, they're able to sleep another 12 minutes, and they get home 12 minutes sooner. So, and, so, but it is going to be closed down again in the spring for about 60 days to, to build another little bridge between the Teconic and those stores there, and, but right now, our, our students, next week, will be coming over that overpass, they don't have to go across the traffic, whizzing up and down to Teconic, and I'm going to, it's going to be a lot safer, and really, really thrilled that that's, that's finally done.
And I just want to add, as we did with Mike Lee's department, health and safety and maintenance became more important than education this year, or certainly equally important, although it always is. It was the catchwords, we wouldn't, our teachers wouldn't have been able to teach if they didn't feel like our kids and our students were safe, so I want to thank all your staff operate like they're taking care of their family on every given day.
Yeah, they do.
It is very much appreciated. And I love, I have the screen up on my computer of the onsite disinfectant generator, you've justified a year of organic chemistry in college, because I actually understood how that worked.
You know what that is? I, I had to learn about it. Actually, Brian Mansfield brought it to my attention, and I'm like, yeah, that sounds really cool, and we, it's, it's.
For years, I said, why did I struggle in that class? Now I know why, and you should have our chemistry departments come over, so.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Can we brand that and make it, you know, sell it?
Well.
We already bought it from someone else.
Believe me, my entrepreneurial mind.
So I just want to quickly point out that, I mean, the words I use to describe the technology department, every one of them also pertains to Dave and his staff foresight, flexibility, innovation, dedication, and expertise. And I know we've recognized Dave and his staff already this year, but again, I can't underscore how essential they have been to our operations, and how vital Dave has been to our administrative team, and the leadership he's provided across transportation facilities and operations. So just wanted to say thank you again.
Thank you.
To you and your entire staff. Unlike Mike, we won't make you name everyone, because there's a lot of more people.
There's a lot of them, and, and some of their names are really impossible for me to, to pronounce. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Jeremy, can I say one thing? If we could, on the presentations going forward, when we show the staffing here year over year, that would be helpful.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we're going to open it up to our student representative report, and I see we have a student representative in the audience.
I'm Jessica, if you don't know. Parker unfortunately couldn't make it today, he's working tonight, so, yeah. I don't have any formal report, but I do want to open up if there's any questions you have regarding like a pulse in the student body or anything like that. I am not as knowledgeable on the elementary and middle school body right now, but I do have friends who have siblings, so if you guys have any questions.
So I guess the main question is, how are you doing? How are students doing in general? I mean, you can talk about just the high school if you want, but like, this is really hard. Remote learning is difficult, missing out on, like, so just really, how are you doing?
Um, I'm personally doing well. I think the hardest part about all of this, for at least me and the 20-something IB diploma candidates, is navigating the IB program with everything being so new, and then now throwing the COVID on top of it, and also managing time at home, oftentimes without parental, or some, a lot of kids don't have spaces where they're able to separate work and home.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that's probably the hard, I had a hard time with that, I had to, like, I fortunately had access to a desk, so I moved my desk downstairs, and now there's like a whole bunch of stuff on my floor. But, so yeah, that's what I've been doing, and if there's anybody watching home, I suggest you do the same, if you're having trouble with that. So yeah, that's me personally. The college process has been difficult, but also I feel like College Board and other colleges have been very open about, and understanding about the situation. What else, and?
Well, if we, if, if you were looking to the board to do something to make things better, are there any things that you can think of that we could look at or consider that might make things easier or better? You can tell us at another meeting, but I mean, like, we really want to know what's going on with students, because we can't, we can't fix things if we don't know what's wrong, or have your ideas about how to fix it. I think about what, I think it was Dave said about, you know, like, we ask, doesn't mean we can do everything that, that you would ask for, but you're in a whole different place than we are, and so, you know, your, your input would be greatly appreciated.
I can't think of anything off the top of my head right now, but.
Okay.
I'll, I'll get back to you.
We'll add that to your homework on top of your IB assignments.
God, give the assignment to your friends. Tell them to think of some plans.
You come up with like a top 10 student wish list.
Right.
Just, just be careful, all right? Don't, don't be too rough.
I almost went too much. I almost spent too much money.
Okay.
You know, we all talked about last year, we felt so sorry for the class of 2020. But they had five or six relatively normal months. And the class of 2021 walked into this year, you know, with a different educational experience. So the fact that you're applying to colleges, that you're all getting things done, you're still excelling, I'm just in awe.
Thank you.
Absolutely in awe.
Actually, it just reminded me, the juniors taking the SAT. I was not able to take the SAT. I had it scheduled four times and all four got canceled. So I don't know if trying to discuss with the juniors how they're going to, like, about the SAT because a lot of them got pushed back to the senior year, which does affect their college applications if they, if some colleges decide not to go.
Optional.
Test optional.
So I could speak to the fact that we're actually offering first the PSAT in-house for all the juniors. I don't know the date off the top of my head, but I know it's scheduled. So all juniors will have an opportunity to take the PSAT here in the district. What we'll do is essentially transition everyone to a remote-only schedule to high school for that day, invite in all of the juniors to take the test, and then we'll spread them across the entire building and use our existing faculty and staff to proctor it. So I know that's the plan for the PSATs and we can certainly replicate that when it comes time to take the SATs later in the spring.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask how it's going with clubs and extracurricular activities? Are you able to participate?
Um, so I've still had meetings with some of my clubs. A lot of honest societies and clubs have kind of come to this weird impasse where we don't quite know what to do because we can't really fundraise to do anything because we're not doing anything. And any ideas we have for fundraising aren't really feasible with the conditions that we're in right now. So like, I had my environmental club today and it was more so just a chat. And we've been doing this like little online thing and we send each other articles and stuff like that. But other than that, it's, we're not able to really do much. We're still in contact with each other. When I heard about the wellness center opening up, I got really excited because that means I'm going to be able to do stuff, hopefully. So, yeah.
Thank you.
It's a perk of being a student rep to the board is you could be one of the first students to get a tour of it.
Yes.
We'll find a time for Parker and you to to get a tour of the facility before it opens.
I was going to ask when the tour is going to be, so.
As soon as that turf is down. You can go in there now, but it's still loud and cold.
Looks like a warehouse right now.
You don't want a tour until the heat's on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Also, the freshmen I know for a fact are having a hard time staying motivated in school. I'm part of the big buddy program and the teachers in charge, Miss Deceana and Miss Penta, were saying about how it's a little frustrating, not frustrating, difficult to get the freshmen involved. Because they're not in school, a lot of them aren't involved in clubs because they don't see anybody, they don't know who to talk to. So I don't know if there's a way to maybe improve upon that. I could probably talk with you guys. But also, like, we were discussing on ways to help the freshmen. And my first thought was grade oriented, but not everybody's grade oriented, so I don't. It is one of those hard things where we don't quite know what to do because it's hard to get freshmen involved, especially when you're stuck at home and school doesn't feel real. So.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Tough act to follow, Dr. Loft. You have to follow Jess. So sorry.
Sorry, she just prompted me to think of something. All right. Thank you very much, Jessica. All right. So I'm going to begin my report first by welcoming everyone back. I hope everyone had a happy new year and a wonderful holiday. We welcome staff back into the buildings today, although obviously instruction resumed on Monday. It was nice, it was the first time in several weeks that the entire district office was back and you could sort of feel the energy in the building as soon as you walked in the door and saw all of the faces there and people back. So it was, at least in our case, very exciting to have everyone back in the building. So really, most of the COVID information I wanted to share this evening is related to our anticipated testing program. This is something we spoke about on occasion throughout several months. And what was once seemingly impossible has now reached the point of becoming a reality. And we had a logistics planning meeting yesterday morning involving a great number of staff members to really finalize what our plans would be to offer our own in-house testing. Through our partnership with Putnam County Department of Health, we were able to get over four, almost 400 rapid test kits, which we have on site. And we're beginning to develop, or we've developed and getting ready to share the logistics of what that plan is. So just a quick overview. The location of our testing program will be at the Putnam Valley Elementary School in the cafeteria. It'll be voluntary, so communications will be sent out to the community and there'll be an online signup. So individuals can pick a date and a time, and that's when they would show up to the site. There'd be numbered parking spots and we have a whole process in place from registration to the signing for consent to actual the testing occurring. And I do want to take an opportunity to thank our school nurses and our athletic trainer. They've all been trained, they've been fit tested for N95 masks, and they're prepared to offer that service to our students and staff. Students would wait in their cars after their sample is taken. And we have a system in place after the 15 minutes passes where their test results will be delivered directly to their car. We have enough tests to test 20% of our in-person students and staff. Now, the big remaining question is really timing. There's two options. We can opt for an immediate testing program. An immediate testing program would begin likely the beginning of next week. But some things to consider if we went that route. It would mean extending our remote learning. So we anticipate students returning to elementary school on Monday, middle school and high school on Tuesday. But if we opted for immediate testing, then we would look to extend the remote learning for an additional week. Some of the questions related to the immediate testing, just that we can discuss this evening, is if we're designated at a later date in time, will the state honor the test results that we collected ourselves? And if not, will we be able to receive additional tests if needed? I guess the greatest fear with the immediate testing model is if we use our test next week to sort of test everyone back into school and there's lots of positives around that. Students haven't been around each other, there's little risk for contact tracing needs. But the question is, if we receive a designation at a later date this winter, will the state accept our testing results? And if not, will we be able to get more tests in order to reopen school? So there's definitely some risk associated with that. The responsive testing model means we would await a state designation and guidance. Students would return as planned on Monday, January 11th. Now, the questions associated with that and some of the risk associated with that model is that we know once students and staff return to the building, we'll again enter, there'll be need for contact tracing, there'll certainly be quarantine orders. And any testing program would likely only exacerbate both of those issues. So I'll just pause right there and just sort of open it up for a quick conversation, a discussion amongst the board regarding sort of just thoughts on the immediate model versus the more responsive model.
Now, we have no guidance from the state on the second question, correct?
No. So regarding the responsive model, we were told, at first, the governor is quoted as saying a county above 9% could stay open as long as test positivity within the school was below that number. What that neglected to provide information on was the fact that 95% of schools and counties that are over 9% don't have a designation, therefore there's no rules to follow. What percentage do we have to test? How long do we have to test them? How many have to be students versus staff? So we, none of that guidance exists. So the state acknowledged the guidance did not exist and they are now working on it. As recently as this morning, they had shifted from it's not the county positivity rate that's going to drive the testing requirement. It's the regional positivity rate. So still, there's, I think, six of the nine regions across New York State are above 9%. So there's still plenty of schools that are in that predicament and are waiting the guidance. We happen to not, although Putnam County is well above 9%. The Mid Hudson region is slightly below at 8. something percent. I didn't look today. So reasonably, we could assume the Mid Hudson will also eventually move above 9%. By then, we may have guidance. I would hope we would have guidance by then. So that's sort of where we are now. It's a bit of a waiting game. And there's obviously risk associated with both models.
Well, I, I, just off the top of my head, I'm thinking along the lines of, I guess it doesn't really matter unless we had guidance, that if we were to be, we have another window because we have, the schools are closed on the 18th, correct? For Martin Luther King Junior Day. So I wonder if, you know, since it's only one week in school until there's a day off. But that day off is a Monday and at least in the elementary, the middle school and the high school, that's a remote day anyway. Would have been a remote day anyway. I just wonder if there's some connection to, you know, having a delay and to get guidance from the state so that we don't, so we know a little bit more rather than making a choice to start testing on our own, say, next week. So I, I don't know, it's just.
Are 400 tests about 20% of our students and staff?
Yeah, there's a, it's a little bit over because it's 400, it's 20% of those in-person learners. So you back out anyone who's a remote. So it's a smaller number we're beginning with. It's about 320 or so is the total number we need to conduct. Now, we would obviously do more than that. We would open up as many slots as we had tests, just to have as much availability as possible.
And it'd be one time?
Yeah, the way it works right now, at least in the yellow zone designation, assuming nothing changes when new guidance is released, assuming that you conduct your testing and you do your 20%, of which 10% must be staff, 10% must be students, that as long as your positivity rate is below that of the region, you can stop testing at that point in time. If you, if you have a designation as an orange or a red zone, then the requirement is for the testing to continue. So that's a big unknown for us.
Because that would be a weekly test, right?
Right now, in orange and red, it actually just changed yesterday. You have to do 10% every two weeks continuously. In red, you have to do 15% every two weeks continuously.
And are those districts getting the tests?
I think in our region, the only orange zone district I know is Portchester. And I don't know offhand whether they're testing or if they just, I know they shifted to a remote for an extended period of time. I don't know whether they've even brought students back for in-person learning. Because that's the other option. If you can't test, they just stay remote. Everybody else in our region is yellow and those schools have all completed their 20% testing and have reopened.
The advantage to testing immediately is we're testing after, you know, people have been out for holidays and after the anticipated potential surge. The disadvantage is it extends remote learning another week. And it might ultimately not count in two weeks.
Why, why would it extend remote learning for a week?
Yeah, explain that again.
Because I really, in order for us to begin testing next week, we can't test with students in the school. It just logistically would be impossible. And once you found, like, if we have a positive student in school, we would send the entire school home. But if we're going to spend a week testing, we could be sending the entire elementary school home every day if we find one positive. So from a logistics standpoint, plus all our nurses would have to be part of the testing program, which would leave our other buildings without nurses.
I see.
So it's a contact tracing, quarantine, staffing issue. It really, in our minds, the only feasible way to safely conduct a testing is to do it while everyone's remote. Plus, it'll just go that much faster. We'll get it done in a shorter period of time.
But we think five days is enough to do 400 tests?
It should be more than enough, yeah. We estimate being able to do a little over 100 tests a day, assuming that all of those time slots are booked. That's the other unknown. Once we advertise this to families, how many take advantage, sign up for a slot and show up? And if not enough in the first couple of days, we have to continue to offer it long enough to get our 20, well, we're assuming 20%, but we don't know what the number will be because the guidance hasn't been written.
How are we dividing that between staff and students?
10 and 10, they said.
First come, first served or?
Right now, for the other designations, there is a breakdown, has to be 10% students, 10% staff. I don't know whether or not we would do that way, but we would certainly, for staff, it would be first come, first served. And for students, it'd be first come, first served. But I don't know the breakdown of what percentage of available tests would go to each group until we have some guidance. If we decide to do it ourselves, we would just simply follow the guidance that exists for the yellow designation area, which is the 10 and 10.
How would we solicit? How would they sign up?
So what we would do is we already started creating a communication that will go out to the community. We, in partnership with Alex Goffman, the technology department has been working with me. We found an online program that allows us to display all of the available time slots. And once one person clicks on it, it'll disappear. It'll prompt them to enter some basic information, which sort of starts the registration process. And then when they show up at their, at that designated time, we'll have tests set up. They'll complete the registration process on a computer and then they'll go through the testing, back to their car, and then we'll have results delivered to their car.
And to confirm, I know you said this, I just want to say it out loud, it's only staff and students?
Yeah, it's only available to district staff and students, not available to the community.
Just having gone through some testing and an outside resource, was there any thought about doing some of that paperwork piece remotely? Or tele, telephone, teleconferencing?
So the consent, we had created an electronic consent. We were ready to send it out to the community and the conversations I had with my colleagues who had already gone through the process, they've had a great deal of success at simply collecting the consent at the point of testing. What you have otherwise is you have people who did not complete the consent show up, some who did. Now you're cross-referencing other sheets to try to determine whether the consent was filed. I think we would likely offer some hybrid for high school students specifically. Have the students able to drive themselves there, but not able to consent themselves if they bring their consent form with them. That'd be something that we would likely honor. But the registration process, what they're really doing is they're registering when they sign up online. But we need to collect other information from them that is uploaded on a spreadsheet directly to New York State.
Okay.
Essentially, the way this works is we are treated, the school district itself is treated as a health care facility. A healthcare lab facility. We conduct our own tests, we result our own tests, we report, or it doesn't even go through the county health department. Like, I have access to a state database where our test results, negative and positive, and along with that information that we'll have to collect at the registration table. It's not a ton of information, but fields, date of birth, all the stuff like that, that need to be entered directly onto that spreadsheet. So it can be submitted to the state.
You know, if we had unlimited tests, obviously, we, I would say we do it on our own. But I, you know, without guidance, I would, I guess, in my sense, it would be, it's a hedge to wait till we were forced to have to do the testing, then do the testing that way. That's just my gut. I mean, I.
But you could wait and not necessarily wait till the state says you have to, but just wait another week or so to see if more guidance came in and then do immediate testing, you know what I mean?
Right, right. So I guess the other piece hanging out there that I haven't mentioned is we have requested additional tests from the state. At first, I got an approval and they said they'd be here tomorrow. And then I got an email that said, oh, now they're being delayed five to seven days. So I am like. So I am, I, myself, I can't rely on those tests showing up if they're physically here.
But the vast.
We've done the work to at least request them, which would give us the flexibility to do it on our own and then have a backup if we needed them.
So the reason we're, we're kind of talking about trying to get them done right away is because of holiday surge and et cetera. But I know I was looking, the vast majority of schools in the Westchester County, it seemed like south of, say, Austin, Pleasantville, came back already, kids and staff. Have you gotten any feedback about whether there's been any great surge? And, I mean, those kids are already back together for now four days.
Yep. So I did have a conference call this afternoon with superintendents from the Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs, I think it's 14 or 18 schools, and many of them reopened on the 4th with students. And I was actually, I saw what I was going to share later, it's positive news. On that conference call this afternoon, the schools who had reopened this week have not reported any increase in the number of positive cases compared to before the holiday break. So I specifically asked that question, curious to see, are they seeing a spike? Obviously, the number in the region is increasing, but are they realizing those same increases within their schools? And they got not a huge sample size, but a significant number of schools in our region who have reopened, and they were pretty confident that they have not seen an increase in positive cases within their school. So that's some positive news.
Yeah, that is, because, you know, that was one of my concerns. I keep listening, yeah, I gotta stop listening to the news, you know? It's better if I'm uninformed. But, you know, I mean, it's scary, this new strain and all the, you know, they, they keep saying this is, you know, January's going to be really dark and February, I just, I'm concerned for our students and staff and bringing them back. I want to be sure that, I mean, I know, you know how I feel about having students in front of teachers or teachers in front of students. But we need, we need them all to survive. And I just, you know, like, I'm, I'm, I'm even concerned with thinking about students coming back next week. I don't know.
And keep in mind that our teachers did come back.
Our teachers did.
Yeah.
So you're probably a terrific poker player, Dr. Luff, because you're one of the best poker faces I know. Are you leaning?
It's the mask.
Are you leaning in one direction or another based on your conversations with colleagues? You've talked to CDC and medical professionals more than education providers for the last six months. We don't know if we're going to, under the guidelines, we don't know if we're required to test in the zone where the designation we are. We may be required to test in two weeks. Where are you weighing all of that?
Well, the trick is, if I knew the answer, I would have only offered one solution.
Oh, no.
No, it's, I guess my hope has been all week, truly, my hope has been that the state released the guidelines, they, they provided the designation, and, and we would delay reopening schools, we would stay remote for a week and we'd start testing, and there would be no risk associated with that. I think that's the, obviously, the best of both scenarios would be to do them both at once, right? And that's, it's obvious at this point that hasn't happened, which leaves us sort of in this.
Limbo.
Limbo.
Yeah, limbo of not knowing what's the right way to go. I do believe that there's two districts in the area that have opted to go, the sort of the proactive testing route, and will be getting testing next week. But I believe everyone else is in the latter camp of waiting to see what happens. And many, many have not even made it this far in terms of getting possession of the tests, getting the licensing, the lab license, getting access to the, to the state database. Many districts aren't as far down the road as we are to even be able to test if they are designated.
So, but, you know, so the upside would be that we, we'd have, I was trying to see, we would avoid, I guess we wouldn't avoid anything because we would just know of the cases before as opposed to after, right? Because we'd test them and then they, whatever contact tracing had to happen there, that would happen, and we wanted to close down as much as if we found out in two weeks or a week or three days after we opened of an influx and then were forced to test. But if we are, it's just a matter of, it's managing the risk of exposure as opposed to the risk of going remote, because we're going remote in either direction, right? We're going remote to test, or we're going remote and testing, or we're going to test while we're remote. So the question is, what's the cost benefit analysis of hopefully not hitting the numbers or hitting that, we see the spike and the spike doesn't hit our, enough of our school district or our region to force us to have to do the testing, rather than chance that we won't be able to use our test data for anything, I can say for anything other than, but without diminishing it, that we would be able to prevent some students or teachers from going back into the building ahead of time.
Right. It's the risk we assume by not testing to reopen versus the risk we would assume to wait or test and, and then not know if we're going to be forced to close for a month later as we wait for new tests.
As we wait for new tests, right. It'd be a non-issue if we had 2,000 tests ready to go.
Correct.
Is there any way we can shorten the time to three days versus five?
It's, right now, it's an unknown because I have no control over the signups, over the level of interest we would get from the community. So if I can guarantee that we can fill every available slot for three straight days, we could probably finish it. But if it takes us time to get the community support, to get their buy-in, to get them to have their, get their kids to the site, that's definitely going to delay it longer. So I think that's why the week feels like a safer time period and, because if you get through three days and you've only tested 8 percent, then where are we? We haven't met any of the metrics, and now we're reintroducing students to the building, which means any subsequent testing is going to result in contact tracing. Does that make sense? Sorry, I talk about this all day long and sometimes it sounds like a foreign language, but.
Just in my head, calendar-wise, are we, what's the end of this semester? What's the?
End of January.
All the way to the end of January? Okay. Because I thought it was like the 19th or the 18th, and it's only one week.
It's almost February 1st.
You know, I might say immediate, but if it's the end of January, that's.
So if we weren't, is, we are currently not designated as an orange zone as of now. If we did not proactively get these tests, we'd be opening on Monday.
Yep, correct.
Um, and I think we've, we've encouraged people to be safe, we've allowed this extra week, we're going to continue, even, you know, if we do the testing and a week later we bring our kids back, you know, that doesn't mean the surge is over and we might need it again, you know?
You'd be, yeah, ask our teachers to come in?
It's, and it's already Thursday, you know? If we want to start testing on Monday, I think that's almost unrealistic.
Yeah, I don't think we'd be able to pull everything, you'd be able to pull everything together, get people to sign up and then start coming in on next Wednesday, I guess, or next Tuesday. It's already a challenge to be able to tell elementary school parents that they're going to have another week where they're going to be at home when they expected to come.
On a Friday.
Right. So it sounds to me like we're leaning towards.
Opening on Monday.
Open as planned. And the reality is, is if we open and we have excessive number of positive cases next week, we could always close, begin testing immediately.
Yes.
I think, I'm happy to report that we're at a place where we could quickly mobilize to make this happen. And that's, as of today, we're in that position. We would have never been able to do it earlier than this. So I guess having the flexibility to pause and test with or without state designation is something, I guess, a nice option that we have as we monitor what happens when, when students start to return.
And if anybody is positive next week, setting that up today isn't going to make it, there's still going to be positive whether we test them or not.
Right.
And seeing that, again, that this is one of those years where we have a full February break pending, so it's, just breaks up more and more of any of the in-person stuff by, by having that just, you know, six weeks away, four weeks away.
Okay. All right. So any other comments on the testing front?
Very stressful.
I mixed in a happier note next.
Thank you.
All right. So the next topic I wanted to discuss was the vaccinations. So currently, members of Group 1A are receiving their vaccinations, and this group has changed a little bit as of late. So Group 1A is primarily comprised of healthcare workers, but in our case, school nurses, occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech pathologists, and social workers and psychology, sorry, psychologists, I said, have been added to that Group 1A list. So I'm happy to record, report that many of the individuals, our staff members that fit within those categories have already or are scheduled to receive their vaccinations over the next couple of days. In fact, we had a couple of individuals who called yesterday afternoon and were vaccinated last night. So there's a very quick turnaround time for those who qualify. Unfortunately, not everyone qualifies. The next group to start receiving vaccinations is Group 1B, which is comprised of first responders, essential workers, which includes school district employees. So for many of our staff and administrators and really everyone within the district, certainly within, I mean, don't quote me on this, but I hope, hopeful within the next few weeks that they'll start allowing members of Group 1B to sign up for their first shot of the vaccine. So to me, this seems to be the only realistic end to this pandemic, so I'm very excited to know that some of my colleagues have already been able to take that first vaccination.
And the, and they were eligible even being school staff, like school nurses, school social workers. Yeah, I know. I'm making an appointment tomorrow.
Did you get yours?
No, I, I have not been given that information with my school district yet, so I'll certainly be asking.
Want me to send you an email? I'll send you an email so you can go.
I believe, I believe, I can ask.
It's on the state website. I know it's on the state website, it's at school psychologists, as of January 4th, so.
Okay, I had looked last week and who was 1A and, like you said, it did.
It changed Monday.
Yeah, they added a whole bunch to 1A, yeah.
All right. Questions on vaccinations?
No.
Okay.
Yes.
So the next topic I want to talk a little bit about was the field free meals program. As everyone's aware, free meals have been available for all students for great, for some time. It actually benefits the school district when students and families take advantage of that free meals program based upon the reimbursement we receive. So I asked Jeannie Denike to work with our food services staff to determine how many meals that we've provided since we closed prior to the holiday break. And the number I received was 4,214 meals have been served from when we stopped in-person instruction to, through today. That's a pretty impressive.
So through March, from March?
No, 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 just in December.
September.
December.
December. Of Decem, oh, just in.
When we stopped in-person learning.
That's impressive.
Prior to the break, yep. So now Dave spoke a lot about the construction. We're currently completing the masonry, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing work within the Health and Wellness Center. The field prep and turf scheduled to begin next week, and our anticipated substantial completion date is by February 1st, even though Dave said six weeks.
I'm with you, Dave. Hedgeless bets.
The next topic I want to talk about is the proposed solar farm on the property adjacent to the school district, primarily the middle school. The school district has hired an engineer to conduct a review of the plans, and we've received a draft report from the engineer. So I'm just going to highlight some of what he highlighted in his recommendations. So one of the concerns that the engineer raised was related to stormwater management. I'll just read a little excerpt. "The stormwater management report should be modified or further, to provide further justification and provide supporting the pre, and provide information supporting the pre-verse-post development conditions affecting the school property with regard to the water quality and quantity." So the proposed resolution is detention basins 1 and 2 should be adjusted to provide at least one foot of free board above the 100-foot, 100-year flood elevation. Concern: It appears that the subsurface runoff from the Lockwood property has found its way to the school property, possibly accounting for the high volume of groundwater observed and documented with pictures and a video showing groundwater pouring into an open excavation. The recommendation is that it's advised that an appropriately sized curtain drain be installed along the southeast end of the school property.
Which is where? That's like Foothill Street, that, is that southeast?
Yes. Yes. The last, last piece on our stormwater management, to lessen the visual and drainage impacts, the applicant should consider increasing the 50-foot buffer on the Lockwood property, abutting the school property to an 100-foot. And a minimum, a 50-foot buffer should not be disturbed for any reason. The next category is wildlife and plant life. The concern is the removal of thousands of trees will significantly affect wildlife and plant life. The recommendation is there should be a biodiversity study of the subject property and of the region to assess how wildlife will be affected. The study should also address the impact of the large wetland on the adjacent property. Recommendation: The applicant proposes to maintain a 100-foot buffer around the wetland, thereby eliminating the need for a wetland permit. And then the last category is visual landscape. The concern is that the school district has serious concerns about the visual impact of the proposed solar farm on its view shed. Currently, trees within and outside the 5.8 acre watershed on the adjacent property will be removed and replaced with near-grade level solar panels. And the recommendation is the applicant should provide the school with a 3D computer-generated video or rendering of how the view from different locations on school grounds in the buildings will change. So that's just a quick summary of the report. The entire report has been shared with the board. Once final, it will be shared with the community as well as the town of Yorktown, which is the lead agency on the permitting. And I think one sort of resounding feeling on speaking on behalf of the board is that obviously, given the amount of solar panels we've utilized on our district property, we certainly have no, I won't say argument, but we, we certainly believe in solar panel, in solar energy as an efficient and productive way of generating. And our concerns is just really related to the clearcutting of forested land to add those solar panels as opposed to finding a location that's already pastured and would not require the same degree of clearcutting. Anything to add?
Just for the audience, what, what Dr. Luff was talking about is Carl Edison is proposing to build a solar farm behind the school up past Foothill Street up there. And they're talking about clearing the whole area and putting in the farm there. And, and that's what he was talking about, the impact that it have just on water flowing off, the view for the students and just the viewer of us and everything else. And that's where they're talking about building this.
And then we will look at this recommendation and draft a resolution and letter to Yorktown, I believe, and have the, and the resolution will be, will be prepared for our next board meeting.
That's the plan.
All right.
All right. Today, we welcomed teachers back into our building and, our buildings, and held one of our after-school professional development sessions. So some of the topics that were covered, the elementary school focused on narratives for their element, for their report cards, setting their DRA dates, I-ready, and benchmark discussion. discussions. Middle school had content area and grade level curriculum work. And the high school, teachers broke into groups, selected an article to read, and then had to write a brief reflection after a conversation or discussion with their colleagues. So just a quick overview of what happened today in an after-school professional development session. I know that Ms. Mastretta and Lauren Soprano hosted another meeting of the Anti-Racism Committee right before the break, and I know some of the discussions during that meeting focused on either the creation and dissemination of a survey in-house and possibility of extending that out to the community. I did just want to quickly summarize. I had sent an email to district staff this afternoon regarding yesterday's events at the Capitol Building, and I'd like to just read sort of an excerpt. I wrote, "I imagine, like many of you, I was initially unaware of what was occurring. By the time I turned on the coverage, I was horrified by what had transpired. Many images from yesterday will forever be engraved in my mind. The conversations I attempted to have with my two young boys will never do justice to what had actually occurred. I will forever be a champion of free speech and peaceful protest, but what happened yesterday was certainly neither of those. It was an assault on police officers, desecration of a sacred building, and a deliberate attack on democracy." So I just, that's obviously my personal feelings towards everything that I had seen yesterday, but I did want to make sure that I shared my sentiments, my feelings towards what transpired with the board and the community.
Dr. Luff, I did, I think we all received the email that you sent to staff about how to talk about controversial and difficult conversations. I'm sure students had questions. We certainly don't want teachers being put in positions of giving their own personal opinions that might vary from students and, you know, have some negative feelings results. So those guidelines were very, I found them very helpful.
That was my next paragraph.
Sorry.
I wasn't going to read it, but no. You guys could, could So I also wrote, "I know your building and district administrators shared many resources with you this morning, and I hope these help facilitate meaningful and age-appropriate dialogue with your students. I'm sure that many difficult questions will continue to come your way. Don't ever hesitate to reach out to your teacher or administrative colleagues for support when needed." So yes, we, Ms. Mastretta, the building principals, did a great job of quickly collecting resources and getting information out to the teachers to help prepare them for what everyone knew was going to be the topic of conversation within their classes today.
Proactive. No, that was good, they were proactive.
Jeremy, I just want to say you reported on, when you were reporting on the work that was done today by staff, and I was thinking of, you were talking about I-ready and DRA and, you know, the end, the end of the semester coming. I just want to be sure that, I mean, having been in a classroom and knowing my sort of like benchmark, this is what I want to do for March, January, February, March, whatever, and that this has changed that, not just what happened in Washington, but what's happening with COVID, with what's happening in families. So I just want to remind, maybe, I don't know how to remind staff and teachers that sometimes we need to let go of some of our benchmarks that we have in our head and think about the progress that students are actually making in their lives, dealing with things that they've never had to deal with before. I think of the, you know, our student representative and thinking about those kind of things. So I know it can be hard to let go of some of those things, and I think teachers need to hear that it's okay to let go of some of them and to just really focus on student growth rather than, oh my God, last year I had, I was up to chapter 37, I'm only at chapter 30, whatever. You know what I mean? It's okay to let go of some of that. Not, not that we shouldn't constantly challenge our children and not that we shouldn't set high bars and expectations, but, but I think that sort of like life is a high bar and an expectation at this juncture. So I just want teachers to know that, that we're not looking for what you did two years ago as a benchmark.
I think if anything, yesterday's events were probably an exclamation point after sort of that, the belief of social-emotional well-being and, and what's happening with students personally before academically, I think is sort of a theme that has progressed throughout the school year. So I'm sure the teachers appreciate those words and the support, certainly the world in which they're living in. Content obviously cannot come before those other things.
Right.
So a couple of quick last items. I did want to extend my condolences. We've fortunately had several staff members and their friends and family impacted by losses over the last couple of weeks, so I certainly wanted to extend my condolences to each of them. I also wanted to extend some congratulations. Will Corano, as many have heard, is fulfilling a lifelong dream and will be wrestling for the University of Iowa. And we found out today that two of our students, Aleah Steele and Emma Silverman, have been named Top 300 Scholars in the Regeneron Science Talent Search, which is the nation's oldest and most prestigious science and mathematics competition for high school seniors. So they'll be naming their finalists in a couple of weeks, and we'll keep our fingers crossed that one or both of them make it to the finalist level. But I do know each of them receives a $2,000 scholarship and the district receives a $2,000 grant on their behalf. So a huge congratulations to all of them.
That's great.
As noted by our presentations this evening, our budget development process has begun. Board presentations, as we saw this evening, have started. Individual building and department meetings and department budget meetings have been scheduled and begin tomorrow, I believe. We're still looking at this year's financial outlook. It remains a little tenuous. Next year's financial outlook remains unknown at this point, and this obviously presents difficulties when it comes to budgeting. At this point of year, we have a very firm grasp on what our actual expenses are and our revenue for this year, and we really have a strong foundation to build off of for next. This year, it's sort of like building on a foundation of Jell-O. We're not really sure how much money we're going to get from the state throughout the remainder of this year, which makes it that much more complicated to build a strong budget for next year when you're not even sure what you're getting this year. So I know that Jill and her department have been working hard. Jill and I have been meeting almost on a daily basis, and I have faith in our administrative colleagues that we're going to find a way to balance the budget and make it all work in the best interest of students. But certainly, this year will be exceptional compared to any other one we've ever had to produce a budget for. That's it. Questions?
No.
I want to tap back into some of the talk about the Wellness Center as far as, I think we talked about this a little bit last meeting, and as we get into the change of semesters and Wellness Center being available as a space, more of the thinking of the use of Mondays for more academic in-person time for both the middle school and the high school, and if there's been any movement or discussion about where that goes next.
Sure. So I have begun those conversations with my principal colleagues, discussing the possibility of moving away from the all-remote Monday and transitioning to an alternating cohort Monday. Some districts in our area have already done that, or some districts in our area started that way, and that would obviously increase the amount of in-person instructional time that's available. Obviously, with the unknown, the current unknown, given the positivity rate, I feel strongly that now is not the appropriate time to make that move, but we do want to make sure we have plans in place. So our preliminary conversations have targeted the possibility of the second semester, which would be the end of January. Hopefully, the positivity rate stabilizes by then and begins to dip back down, and we'd feel more confident bringing more students in the building more often. And at that point, we would look to start initiating any potential changes to that all-remote Monday.
I have two other things, but I'll wait until our comment time.
Okay.
So now I'll open it up to public comments on agenda items. Were there any specific to agenda items?
No.
Okay. All right, so we'll move into new business. May I ask you to start us off, Mr. Farrar, with number one?
Resolve to approve the risk assessment and recommended audit plan document for the fiscal year 2020-2021 from Acume Partners as per document number 111-21. Attach the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number two.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to amend the end date of the appointment resolution for Nicole DiDonno as a Point 4 leave replacement special education teacher, approved at the business meeting of August 27, 2020, to end on June 30, 2021.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number three.
Resolved on recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve updates to the 2020-2021 substitute listing as per document 112/21. Attach the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number four.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the revised substitute pay schedule effective January 1, 2021, as per document number 113/21. Attach to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number five.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the winter 2021 coaching stipends as per document number 114/21. Attach the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
All right. Okay.
Go ahead.
Now, just for clarification, because of the current situation with coaching and athletics for winter, this is now the winter season, the, there are only a certain number of teams that are, I guess, cleared to play, but there are many, there are other teams that are not, and based on if we are to close down, the way, well, maybe you can just go into how this is arranged now.
Sure. So the state has allowed low and moderate-risk sports to play at this time. They were actually allowed to start on the 4th, but we made the decision to hold off until the 11th, when our students are returning back to school. There's not a lot of sports. For us, it's primarily our winter track and field team. We do have a couple of students who participate on merged sports, gymnastics and swimming. So those also will continue. But for us, it's primarily track and field that will be allowed to continue, and that's the coaches that we're appointing this evening. There's still some hope across the state that high-risk sports, there's certainly a lot of advocacy going in that direction, requesting that high-risk sports be allowed to continue. I know that Section 1 in the state is looking to determine sort of a date in which if the governor or the state does not make a determination by this date, we're just going to accept it as a reality and start to plan for the next season. Obviously, you could only drag it on so long and still have the possibility of having any sort of season. So for us, it's very much a waiting game to see. At this point, it really requires the governor's actions to allow it before any school can move forward. And personally, I mean, when you, when you look at the positivity rates and what's going on, I don't foresee that necessarily happening anytime soon, but I'm also, not the governor, thank God.
So we're talking about like basketball, football?
Basketball, wrestling, and competitive cheerleading.
Any possible contact sport, basically?
Yeah, those are the three main sports that are considered high-risk in the winter. Girls' and boys' basketball, wrestling, and competitive cheerleading.
All right. Are there any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. That's moving us on to spotlight topics and presentations for upcoming meetings. Dr. Luff, do you have any in mind?
So I know our upcoming presentations focus, obviously, all around budget. Our next meeting will include special education and, why am I forgetting, athletics? So athletics and special education will be on the next one. I know we have a couple of other presentations, academic in nature, that we have. I know the sort of lens in which we teach history is one that Ms. Mastretta is working on with Dr. Entery and some teachers, so that one will be ready and we'll just have to sort of find an appropriate place for it. And as Ms. Mastretta had mentioned last time, is she has a whole separate presentation focused on our special area teachers that we're also working with Maureen and Jeanette to find a meeting where it most appropriately fits in to get those presentations done. So those are two that are definitely coming and just need to be scheduled. Right now, it's sort of difficult because we're in the budget season, and we already have multiple presentations at every board meeting focused on that.
However, it's, you know, even especially given what happened yesterday, being clear in how we present history is really, really important, and the sooner, the better. I, you know, it's, it's, and I'm not saying, I'm saying it personally for myself, that it's embarrassing to have to think about, that we had to think about it because the issue of, of race and native peoples and, and how it's taught and has been taught and, you know, there's so many books that are about kind of such a point of view that, for lack of a better phrase, whitewashes a lot of things. And I think it's really important that, especially in a community like ours that is predominantly white, we need to be very much mindful. I know we had a presentation last week about, or last, last, or the meeting before, about the, they had a lot of the social, emotional, and, and some of the race education conversations starting in the Race Committee or whatever.
Anti-racism committee?
Anti-racism, anti-racism.
I just think it's really, really important that it's something that is kind of front of mind. It's really, it's disappointing in, in our COVID world that we can't be more connected to be able to do something interactive. And, but I mean, teachers need to figure out a way. I think the school social workers, the counselors need to find a way to outside, also inside the classroom and kind of extra outside-the-classroom assemblies, and it's not the idea of, there is an education that has to happen, and I'm not saying I even know how to do it, I'm just saying that there's, there's got to be some path forward where equality or a lack of equality is so, it's got to be brought to, to, to vision. And I think it's even more important, especially given in the type of community that we live in.
Yeah, I mean, I think anybody who met Dr. Fran Wills for more than 10 minutes would recognize that, I mean, you just described her life's work. And I think that the foundation that she created here and the work that has continued since she left, I think the board overall would be very pleased in, in how those subjects are handled within our schools and how our curriculum has changed in ways to address, sort of provide a more realistic and equal view of, or balanced view of history as opposed to one that may be written in a textbook from 1960s. So I know our Anti-Racism Committee is, is new, but it's doing a lot of work. I know we have a student-led group that's doing a lot of work in that area, and I'm confident that our presenters will be able to get that message And I'm confident that our presenters will be able to get that message across both to the board and the community to sort of show how much work has been done in that area and Putna Valley, really driven by, or started by my predecessor and continued.
And I would say that there are so many. I mean, 20 years ago, you would have had a really hard time finding a good book about the arrival of the pilgrims or Native Americans in this area. And now there are so many really great books, new books that have been written. So it's just letting go, again, of some of the stuff that you've always used and accepting. When I was doing 4th grade social studies, you know, there were so many books that the state had suggested in the state curriculum that were great, you know, and that allowed children, students, to act out the divided loyalties that happened during the revolution or whatever, and look at it from both sides. Do you understand how the Tories felt? Did you understand how the, you know? And so it's, and I know that Jeanette has done a lot of work with, and teachers have too, in looking for new resources that paint a better, clearer picture and show things from all sides. So I'm hoping when we're looking at how we teach history, that it starts at the very beginning. It starts with towns and villages or whatever they do in kindergarten and first grade. It starts there. And those teachers know the really good new materials. So I'll be excited to hear about them.
So I think this whole sidebar was in reaction to your topic of how history is being taught in our schools. And I guess what we're saying is bring that in. I know it's hard with budget, but sooner rather than later. And I think that's important based on what everybody's saying. Even after watching the news, I still saw comments on everybody's too sensitive about being politically correct, that everybody's afraid to talk about history. I think we have to really say, no, history has been taught unbalanced. And we have, we are a stand for making it balanced.
And you could do it in, because I know we have budget things, but you could do it in smaller chunks.
Yes.
Elementary, middle, high school. I mean, like, you could do it in smaller chunks. It's not the entire K-12 continuum which might take.
And it's probably better to imbue that conversation longer than just one meeting as well.
Right, right.
And Jeanette and Dr. Love, not to micromanage, because we worked very hard on the board, not to. But I make a suggestion that we look at the Anti-Racism Committee and maybe take a stronger stand in calling it the Undoing Racism Committee. Because I think it'd be very hard to find anybody who would acknowledge, yeah, I'm a racist. And I'm, I don't believe that we should be anti-racist. I think it's very, it's very easy to say I'm anti-racist. But committing and taking action to actually actively undo racism, I just think it's a more powerful quirk of language. So it's my opinion, you can, but...
I think the reality is, despite our best efforts and years of efforts, obviously, like, we have not eradicated racism in our community. And this goes towards a comment we had received from the community before the board meeting, which I'll work with the board to respond directly to the individual. But it is certainly, our work is not complete. And there's obviously, it's going to probably continue forever. And that's unfortunate, but I think that's probably the reality, is we have to continue to get better and better. But I'm not sure it's a finish line we'll ever cross. So much is learned and taught at home, and we obviously have no control over that. We're starting these conversations at younger and younger ages before children become maybe focused on one belief, sort of teaching them at a younger age to consider multiple perspectives. And, but obviously, it's work that will continue for a long time.
And it's related to, it is, it doesn't all have to be coached in the conversation of racism, though it often is through that lens, but empathy, different perspectives. What's the word I'm looking for? Decent human behavior should not go along political lines. I mean, it doesn't matter. I do not believe that who you wanted to be president has any impact on how we should treat each other. And that's what I think our, as a board, as a school district, we talk about productive citizens. We also talk about tolerant, caring, empathetic citizens. And however we do that, whether we increase our empathy, whether we talk about differently abled, whether we look at hormone usage, pronoun usage. I just think that that's something that we really need to keep in the forefront. And the more we bring it out and talk about it, and you can hear that I'm nervous even bringing up these sensitive topics, the more we talk about them, they won't be as sensitive. And we can come up with, like you said, this is not, we're not going to be fixed in our lifetime, in my lifetime, but it just needs to be an ongoing conversation. We have to have the courage to have them. So we will, we did get one, a long comment, more than a question, and we will respond to individual. I don't believe there are any other questions? Does anybody else on the board have anything else?
I had one additional thing. In looking, I was reviewing class sizes in the elementary school this week. And seeing as classes are pretty small, class sizes, not the individual class size, but the entire class, the grades, I wonder if there's an opportunity here, especially given, you know, maybe some regression issues that might happen in elementary school due to last year and partial remote this year, that we explore and see if we have the space available for the 5th grade to move back into the elementary school, since we also have space issues in the middle school. There might be some flexibility there, there might be some cost savings there. And I think there's definitely probably some educational benefit only because of time. If we can explore looking at that, and I don't know if it's next year or the year after, but it seems like there might be an opportunity here, given how small our 2nd, 3rd grades are.
I think the topic of 5th grade coming back to the elementary school surfaces every couple of years. So we've certainly had, it surfaced and it's been discussed, but we have not yet seriously researched it. But it's something that I would be happy to facilitate and report out on the next meeting. I think the one thing off the top of my head is, given the current COVID pandemic and how it forced us to stretch our facilities, I think it certainly made us realize the amount of available space at the elementary school. Where we were able to create an isolation room, it's an entire classroom. We were able to split two sections into two different full-size classrooms. We moved technology out of that little office into a full-size classroom. We turned another one into a conference room. So I think from a space perspective, there's some feasibility behind it. We would obviously need to look at the programmatic and staffing needs associated with it, transportation, other things like that. But I'd be happy to put together some information and share it back out to the board.
It's been a while since we've looked at it, you're right. So it does come up every so often.
Now, we had, the issue is, we had a bubble of class, what is now considered a bubble of class, even though it's a tiny class compared to what bubble classes in the past used to be. So we kind of tabled it, but now we're getting to the end of whatever that mini-bubble in the old school is.
And I would now like, and I feel like we've had so many lessons in Robert's laws and how meetings are run, and it really does help create a structure of respect and expectation. So I will try to get better at some of the procedures. That's why I have Mr. Cohen. But at this point, I would like a resolution to convene an executive session for one manner of the employment history of one particular person, after which time no additional business will be conducted.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Very Happy New Year again to everyone and stay safe and well.